Can I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones, Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for this meeting. As in all previous council meetings, any request to speak must be made using your voting handset. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. We move on to item one, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover and a second to confirm the minutes, please?
Chair, can I move the minutes, please?
Chair, I will second the minutes, thank you.
Are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the No declarations? Item three. Members, can I ask that everyone is respectful to each other during this meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it was not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be able to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the head of legal and democratic services, it will not be revisited. Since our last meeting and throughout June, I have attended various events, including a visit by the Japanese delegation to County Hall and visited the remembering Hiroshima and Nagasaki exhibition at the Oriental Museum in Durham. On June the 10th, I attended the 190th Durham Regatta, and on the 18th and 19th of June, I attended flag raising events at Stanneytown Council and at County Hall Durham for Armed Forces D. Colleagues, I am pleased to announce that 1 million home designed to give children and young people in care a stepping stone to living more independently has been opened in County Durham. The home, which has been named Maple House, sits directly alongside the existing Aycliffe Secure Centre in Newton Aycliffe. The new staff at Maple House will care for up to four 12 to 18-year-olds once they're ready to move out of the centre, providing support and guidance to help them in the community. The home has four en suite bedrooms, spacious living and dining areas, an entertainment room and an enclosed garden, as well as a staff sleep-in room, office and meeting room. A 1.5 million upgrade of County Durham's main cycling, wheeling and walking routes has been completed, with a new glow-in-the-dark section among the improvements made. Durham County Council has worked with Sustenance to deliver the improvements on the National Cycle Network route, which runs through the county. The Department of Transport funded work has taken place on parts of the Between Seum and Pezzpool Wood near Haswell. Resurfacing work has been completed on the two sections between Dordon and the A19, the new Jade Business Park development, and the old coke works at South Hetton. More recently, County Durham's first trial of glow-in-the-dark surfacing has been laid between the old coke works and the A182 crossing point, and south of the A182 resurfacing between the 182 and Pezzpool Lane near Haswell has also been completed, alongside the replacement of the boardwalk in Pezzpool Wood. And finally, schoolchildren in County Durham have been involved in creating a floral annual display at one of Durham's most prominent roundabouts. Pupils from Giles Gate Primary School helped the council's civic pride and cleaning green teams plant this year's flower display at Giles Gate Roundabout. Each year, the Giles Gate display follows a different theme, with this year's design created to mark the coronation of King Charles III. The planting marks the 10th year the school has been involved in the display, which is seen by thousands of visitors and residents coming in and out of the city. We move on to item four, the leaders' report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to announce that the County Durham Pound project has recently been honoured in a national award, the Best Public Sector Project in this year's Social Value Awards. For an initiative that was launched less than a year ago, this is a fantastic achievement, and I'd like to congratulate all those at the council who've been involved in the project so far, as well as the partners involved. The County Durham Pound aims to provide social change by encouraging businesses and other organisations to spend and invest money in a socially responsible way, helping to create more jobs for local residents, reducing our impact on the environment and supporting training and upskilling. As well as impressing the judges at the Social Value Awards, the innovative and collaborative approach taken by the partners, coupled with a dedication to creating sustainable and inclusive communities, is bringing about real results. The partnership has already supported the installation of a wild pod at Oakley Cross School in West Auckland. The pod provides a natural habitat for hedgehogs and other wild animals, and also gives children an opportunity to learn about the importance of looking after the environment. And as a council, we have been working with our construction partners to promote greater engagement with communities, deliver apprenticeships and look for opportunities to employ local people. This award is testament both to the work undertaken so far and the commitment of the partners involved, and once again a fantastic achievement for a project that is only just getting started. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the report?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, could I ask the leader if she's also willing to extend that recognition to Officer Darren Nowt, who's been working on the Social Value project for over four years now, because it was actually a piece of work that was implemented four years ago under the Labour administration, and Darren Nowt has worked really hard on this, being the chairman of that committee for such a long time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Surratt, for the question. I have been in touch with Darren personally to thank him for this on the evening that the award was given. So, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. We move on to item five, questions from the public. We have received one question for today's meeting, which is from Etain Stubbott, who is in attendance.
Thank you. The question is, Holgarth Care Home is a vital service that is currently under threat. Durham County Council has a duty of care to the most vulnerable residents and to provide decent adult service offer for all who need it. So will the council therefore commit to saving Holgarth Care Home, including if necessary, bringing the service in-house?
Can I ask the Cabinet portfolio holder for Adult and Health Services to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. And can I thank Stubbott for the question regarding the closure of Holgarth Care Home in Durham, which is operated by Four Seasons Healthcare. We are fully aware of the situation at Holgarth, and officers from our Adult and Health Services teams continue to work sensitively in partnership with residents, families and Four Seasons Healthcare to ensure the wellbeing of residents. I can confirm that the council is not in a position to take over the care home provision in this case. We are informed by Four Seasons that Holgarth is its only leasehold property, and the current landlord has made it clear that they are not willing to continue to lease the site as a care home service even to an alternative provider. We understand that Four Seasons managers have also made this clear to residents, families and staff. We are also aware that occupancy at the home has been much lower than the optimum level for such services, and has been for some time, meaning that the service would be likely to face significant viability issues were it to remain open. I can also advise you that Durham Care Homes perform well, with both internal council monitoring assessments and Care Quality Commission ratings continuing to show the quality of local services are higher than many comparator areas. There is also currently an over-provision of care home places in County Durham, with detailed demand modelling carried out by the council in 2022/23, predicting that this will remain the case in the coming years. We understand the anxieties of residents, families and staff in the current situation, and are following our established processes for such service closures. The priority for our teams, working in partnership with all stakeholders, would be to continue to support residents and families in finding suitable alternative placements for Holgarth residents. Additionally, we will also be offering support to staff regarding potential alternative employment through our Durham Care Academy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Crute has registered to ask a question, but there are no questions on this item. That concludes this item. The questions and response will be available on the council's website following the meeting. We move on to item six, petitions. No petitions have been received for today's meeting. We move on to item seven, reports from the Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the cabinet to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Present the report as tabled within the papers. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions have been received in respect of this report. Can I ask the council to note the report?
The report's to note, so it doesn't require moving or seconding.
Can I ask the council to note the report?
Agree.
Thank you. Item eight, submissions of minerals and waste policies and allocation development plan document and revised statement of community involvement. Can I ask the corporate director of regeneration, economy and growth to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. The purpose of this report is to seek council's approval to agree the publication draft of the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document for submission to the planning inspectorate. Alongside the policies of the adopted County Durham plan, the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document will contribute to meeting the strategic objectives of the County Durham plan. The document supports the provision of a steady and adequate supply of minerals in accordance with the principles of sustainable development. It also provides policies to support the development of a network of modern waste management facilities, which helps to ensure that waste arising are managed in accordance with the principles of our waste management hierarchy. The publication draft of the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document, attached to Appendix Two, was the final stage in its development, and a consultation took place from 28th of November 2022 to the 13th of January 2023. A total of 65 comments from 20 different respondents were received, and more detail of these is set out in the statement of consultation in Appendix Three. All representations made have been reviewed and carefully considered, and it has been concluded that, subject to a number of minor text and formatting changes, which is shown in Appendix Four, there are no matters arising that would prevent the document from being submitted to the Secretary of State for independent examination. Therefore, subject to the council's approval, the publication draft will be submitted to the Secretary of State in early July for independent examination. The independent inspector will be appointed soon after, and timescales from that point will be determined, although we anticipate that the examination in public, the EIP hearings, will be held in the autumn. After this examination and following consultation on any modifications proposed by the inspector, the council will be asked to adopt the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document. Chair, the recommendations of this report are set out in section seven, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Elizabeth Scott, portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships. Members will recall that the County Durham plan was adopted in October 2020. However, that was not the end of the story, and the Minerals and Waste Policies and Allocations Development Plan document being considered today gives additional detail and clarity on what is required for new development to be acceptable, providing certainty for developers and reassurance for residents. We have engaged the public and stakeholders at every stage of the Minerals and Waste DPD's development, making changes wherever we could. We are therefore confident that the document is sound and ready for the detailed scrutiny it will receive at the examination in public. I would like to thank the staff team for their significant hard work in getting it to this stage. I therefore recommend to the council that they agree the recommendations, paragraph seven, in the report. Thank you.
Councillor Rawlins.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor James Rawlinson, portfolio holder for Resources, Investment and Assets. The Minerals and Waste Development Plan document will ensure we are planning for mineral extraction and waste management in order to provide the infrastructure, buildings, energy and goods the country needs. I therefore second the recommendations to the council that they agree the recommendations at paragraph seven in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Richard O'Meara.
Thank you, Chair. Just to be on the safe side, I'm going to declare an interest as clerk to Shinkliffe Parish Council, who made representations to an earlier stage to this. Thank you.
There's no one else registered to speak. Can I ask the council to agree the report? Thank you. We move on to item nine, Members Allowance Scheme 2324. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report sets out the findings and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel, who met in January to undertake a review of the council's Members Allowance Scheme. The proposals in this report relate to the scheme that will apply this financial year and next financial year. Members will be aware that it's a statutory requirement of the council to have a scheme which sets out details of the allowances and expenses paid to members in fulfilling their role. The current scheme has remained unchanged since 2014/15, when the mileage rate paid to members was reduced to 45p per mile, in line with HMRC guidance. No other change has been made since the current Members Allowance Scheme was introduced in 2009. The scheme needs to be reviewed periodically, at least every four years, in line with statutory requirements, but the customer here in Durham has been to undertake an annual review to consider any changes. These reviews were undertaken by the Independent Remuneration Panel, and the council are required of regard to their recommendations, though are not bound by them and are free to make their own decisions, as evidenced by the fact that on four separate occasions since 2009, the Independent Remuneration Panel have made recommendations to the council to increase allowances, the most recent being last year. Members will recall that, in agreeing not to increase the allowances last year, council and in previous years, council have asked the head of legal and democratic services to write to the Secretary of State to request that the arrangements for reviewing members' allowances are changed, so that the arrangements in England are brought in line with the arrangements in Wales and Scotland, and are not matters subject to local determination. This has been done, and there has been a response saying there will be no change to the statutory requirements in England. Paragraphs 14 to 25 of the report set out the considerations and recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel, and includes updated benchmarking information confering the council's current scheme with other local authorities in our region, but also with our statistical neighbours. The Independent Remuneration Panel resolved to recommend that the council give consideration to freezing the existing allowances in 2324, the current year, and again in 2425, but that a fundamental review of the scheme is undertaken for 2526 to coincide with the boundary commission recommendations on the changes, which will see a reduction in the number of members from 126 to 98 and consequential increase in the caseload for the new membership. If supported, the Independent Remuneration Panel will be engaged in the summer of 2024 in order that the council could consider any proposal for 2526 in the autumn of next year. The Independent Remuneration Panel's proposal was supported by the Constitution Working Group, who met in February to consider their deliberations and proposals as set out in the report. Recommendations, Chair, are set out at paragraph five.
Thank you. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Hopgood.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. As the report sets out, the Constitution Working Group has considered and agreed with the recommendations of the Independent Remuneration Panel that the allowances remain unchanged for 202324 and 2425, but that a fundamental review of the allowance scheme is carried out in advance of the new council size and revised ward boundary arrangements being implemented in May 2025. Historically, as has already been said, there's been little appetite to increase members' allowances since LGR in 2009, so I'm happy to move the recommendations as set out in the report and look forward to the outcome of the review next year, which will inform proposals for the new council from 202526 onwards.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Marshall.
Thanks, Chair. I haven't really got much to add to that other than to thank the members of the panel for the continued support of the council in looking at this. It's a bit of a poisoned chalice. I fully agree with the recommendations and the discussion we had in Constitutional Working Group to bring this back prior to the next local elections, following the conclusion of the boundary review, and I formally second the proposals as outlined. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Marshall. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the report?
Agree.
Thank you. We move on to item 10, motion on notice. There is one motion for consideration today, which is detailed on the agenda. I will hand over to the head of legal and democratic services to explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. The usual rules of debate apply. Movers have five minutes to speak, and seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time, so no further amendments can be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on the amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. Any amendments will be circulated by email to members, as well as shown on screen. Just to flag that, following changes to the constitution at the annual meeting last month, the council procedure rules have changed with regard to the time limits. So as we reach 15 minutes before the expiry of time allowed for motions, the chair will advise members that there is 15 minutes left in the debate, the number of members at that point registered to speak, and that 15-minute warning will be the cutoff for registering to speak. And we'll continue to work through those registered in the order in which they registered until we reach the expiry of the time limit, at which the chair will seek to wrap up the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Michael Stead, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Given that this motion that was due to be moved in January already includes the Labour Amendment, which I think they've forgotten, and the fact that the leader has already spoken to the Secretary of State this week, and the deputy leader has promised to follow this up with a letter to government, I withdraw this motion.
Thank you, councillor Stead. So we move on to item 11, questions from members. No questions have been received for today's meeting. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking for taking part, and to those members of the public and media who have been watching this meeting. Broadcast will be confirmed and ended.